The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of September 22nd, 2025. We'll bring this meeting to order, and tonight we are joined on Zoom by Councillor Tom Mouse and Councillor Kirsten Malizier will be joining on Zoom. Presentations up first, we have a United Way proclamation first on the agenda. So whereas United Way, Estevan's mission is to positively positively impact the quality of life in our community, and whereas Estevan United Ways Telethon raises funds for local member agencies and the community impact projects to improve lives for all in our community, and assigns local volunteers to local projects to make the difference where we live and be it therefore resolved, I, Tony Sernick, Mayor of the City of Estevan in the province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim the week of October 12th through October 18th, 2025 as United Way Telethon Week, and urge all citizens of Estevan to recognize and support the goals and objectives of the Estevan United Way. So there we go, we have the proclamation. The floor is yours.
Thank you, hi. So 49th Telethon is October 17th and 18th at the Estevan Legion here in Estevan. Our slogan this year is "United, We Make a Difference" with a goal of 360 49. So I don't know, I did that to myself.
The 49 you're talking about?
Yes. All the money that we raise will stay right here in our community and will be distributed between our 15 member agencies and five community impact partners. We have a few promos going on for the next few weeks. This Saturday, actually, the 27th, we are slinging burgers at the Bruins game. So come on down about 6 o'clock before the game starts, get your burger, come see us. We've got October 8th and 9th, a great Canadian oil change, $10 from every oil change will be going to the United Way Estevan. Some of you have probably seen Helping Hands already around the community, lots of local businesses doing that. And then we invite you, Council Mayor, everyone, to come out to our kickoff to the United Way Telethon at Murray Jam on the 15th. So come have beef on a bun at lunch and check out all the raffle items.
Excellent, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments for the United Way? Seeing none, well, thank you very much for coming in. Your week is proclaimed, and we can't wait for all the fundraisers coming up, and then obviously the Telethon itself, right? It's a special time, that's for sure. So thank you, guys, for coming in, and thank you for everything you do.
Your worship, could we get a picture?
Oh, yuck, sure. Do you guys just want to?
Yeah, we need a good picture.
Okay, excellent. Council wants to come back here. You want council to stand back here? That works? All right, how long back?
I'm gonna be in the back, so I'm gonna do.
Best of luck. Excellent, good way to start the evening, and up next, it just gets better and better. We are joined by our friend, SAS Power President, sorry, Mr. Rupenpanda, come on up.
Your worship, I'm just gonna bring in another SAS Power delegate.
Okay, sounds good.
I think they're just visiting with the United Way, too.
All with one group in with the next, so again, thank you for coming tonight. We always appreciate visitors, and an update on what SAS Power will be, has planned for the future?
Well, your worship. Your worship, thank you for that very warm welcome, and to all the council members, members of the public that are here this evening, I'll just introduce some of the team from SAS Power that have joined us. So to my left is Rob Nicley, he's the Chair of the SAS Power Board and a community member here in Estevan, a proud community member, and just behind me I have Corey Hayko, who's the Chief Operating Officer for SAS Power, and seated next to him is Darren Foster, who is our Vice President of Policy, and of course, probably the most famous SAS Power employee is Wes Gates, former Saskatchewan Rough Rider, and I am surprised all of you are not wearing Wes Gates jerseys that are signed. He is our community engagement consultant in the Estevan region and will be well-known to all of you. And so thank you to you, and good evening for that very warm welcome. Again, I will make some very brief comments, your worship, just outlining some of the work that SAS Power has underway, and for some of you who are new council members, you'll know that SAS Power comes out each year just to share in an open and transparent way the work that we have underway in the region. Last year, I was very sad that I was unable to be here with you. You had elections, and the provincial government had elections, and so all of our plans to come together were a bit scrambled, so happy to be back here this year. And then, you know, I will share, and I know I shared this last time, your worship, I don't know if you and I have had this conversation, but I used to spend, this part of the province is very fond to me, the southeast Saskatchewan, I used to spend almost every summer, growing up, in Lapham, Saskatchewan, so my dad's sister's husband was a science teacher in Lapham, and so every summer, I would, myself and my little brother would come out to Lapham and spend the entire summer hanging out there, and so I'm, you know, I have fond memories and good friendships that stem from this part of the province. So, your worship, Mayor Sernick, councillors and members of city administration, again, thank you for the warm welcome and the invitation to speak to you tonight about the work SAS Power is doing, particularly in the Estevan area. Visiting different communities across the province and speaking directly to our customers is one of the most meaningful parts of my job, and in my role as President and CEO of SAS Power, and as with you, as elected officials of your municipality, I like to think of us as partners in public service. We're each responsible for delivering essential services that our neighbors, families, and friends depend on day to day. SAS Power's top priority is to provide safe, affordable, and reliable power for our customers and the communities we serve while supporting a growing province. And so I'm very pleased to speak with you tonight, and I like some of the work that we're doing to fulfill this priority around the province and right here in your hometown. The Estevan area has and will continue to play an important role in powering our province. As you know, the Government of Saskatchewan has directed SAS Power to continue operating approximately 1,500 megawatts of coal-fired generation beyond 2030. That direction.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, appreciate the celebration. That direction also includes using coal-fired generation as a bridge to nuclear power, where our efforts are also focused on the Estevan area as well. Here's the latest information I can share with you. In response to the government's direction on coal, we've established an internal team to develop and execute the plans that will enable our three coal facilities, Boundary Dam, the Shan Power Station, and Poplar River Stations, to continue running. The team is now assessing the condition of each coal facility to determine the best approach for extending the life of each of those units, and again, we can get into detail questions at the end of my comments, if that's your desire. Behind the scenes, we're also starting to gather information from industry experts to help us determine how best to approach the coal life extension work. We're committed to sharing updates like procurement opportunities related to extending the lives of our coal-fired units as the work progresses, and extending coal operations doesn't change our long-term goal. We remain committed to achieving net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, as directed by the Government of Saskatchewan. As we look to the longer term, we're continuing to work towards the site selection for Canada's first greenfield nuclear power plant in more than 30 years. While the final investment decision hasn't been made about building the province's first small modular reactor, there are several years of project development, licensing, and regulatory work required that will position us to be able to move quickly if a decision is made to proceed. As you know, the nearby Boundary and Rafferty sites were selected in 2024 as potential locations, and we're continuing consultations with rights holders and engagement with communities and stakeholders in the region. We're also preparing to start the federal government's impact assessment process this year. The addition of nuclear power represents an exciting opportunity for our people and our economy. There is no one supply option that can meet all of our province's needs. We continue to work towards modernizing and diversifying our power system with a variety of sources to provide reliable, affordable power for our customers. That includes investments in wind and solar generation, of which there are several projects in development in the Estevan and larger southeast region. As announced just a few weeks ago, the 100-megawatt Euhannis Solar Facility underway west of the city has been rebranded as the Turning Sun Solar Project, and I'm aware that reps from Turning Sun are going to be attending the upcoming job for this Wednesday night at the Royal Canadian Legion to talk about the various employment opportunities associated with that project. They're estimating that the construction will span up to 18 months, with up to 150 direct employment opportunities available. I'm told construction is on target to start before the end of the year, and this spring we also announced the selection of two more projects, a 200-megawatt Rose Valley Wind Project near Assiniboia, and the 100-megawatt Southern Springs Solar Project near Coronac. The 200-megawatt Seven Stars Wind Energy Project remains in development near Weyburn, and finally, we're in the final stages of hopefully securing a power purchase agreement with a new 100-megawatt solar project that will be procured through the First Nations Power Authority for the south-central area. Our province is growing, and we're making significant investments in our power system to support that growth, as well as the industries and sectors that rely upon increased load to support their operations and future economic development. With this extra load on the system, we're also reinforcing our power transmission system, and that includes several projects you're familiar with. We're building a new table land switching station about 15 kilometers southwest of Estevan. It will support several new interconnections, including the Turning Sun Solar Project, and two new transmission lines connected to the existing lines north of Boundary Dam Power Station, and the proposed international power line we're planning with the Southwest Power Pool. For the Southwest Power Pool Project, we'll be building two 6-kilometer lines starting at the Saskatchewan-North Dakota border, and Beazin Electric will build an additional 180 kilometers of line south of the border in the United States. In March of this year, we received approval from the Ministry of Environment to proceed with the project, and we're now working through the Canada Energy Regulator Process. Once complete, we'll have increased our shared power line capacity from 150 megawatts to 650 megawatts. This will strengthen our power grid and improve emergency support, allowing us to both import and export excess electricity to generate revenue into the future. We're working hard to deliver for our customers, but delivering reliable power is just one part of our commitment. We also invest in communities, in the communities that we serve in, and I'm pleased to share some of the ways we're investing in the Estevan and surrounding area. For example, we've committed $100,000 per year in over 2024, 2025, and 2026 to be a title sponsor for the southeast technology hub. We're pleased to be also, we're also pleased to be able to support local charities, programs, and initiatives, and since 2011, SAS Power has contributed 1.45 million towards the United Way campaign in Estevan, in the Estevan area, matching the funds raised by our employees, and I would say, congratulations on the proclamation. I know that the Estevan region is one of the highest-grossing regions of the United Way in the SAS Power family, and so really proud of the work that occurs here.
We didn't plan it that way, it just happened.
It just happened that way, yeah. Last year, we gave $50,000 to the St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation, and we've been happy to support organizations and initiatives like the Estevan Civic Centre Campaign, the Estevan Comprehensive School, Estevan Fire Department, Estevan Minor Hockey Association, among others, over the years. SAS Power is proud to serve in the Estevan and surrounding region, and we remain committed to working alongside you to ensure we have reliable and resilient power well into the future. I personally value the leadership and partnership that we've developed over the course of the last year, your worship, but certainly with all of the council members over the course of several years, and speaking on behalf of my colleagues over the course of many, many years, and we look forward to working with you in partnership as we move forward. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to details about the work that the company has underway in the Estevan region.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, for sure. Are there any questions from council? Looks like you're getting us lucky tonight, but it was just such a good update, I mean, you covered everything, and no, it's, there were no questions? Or sorry?
Thank you, worship. I know we talked a little bit about this earlier, about what kind of job numbers these kind of projects will bring to the area, and just a high level of, to see what the impact for our local, you know, rentals, housing, and what that could do over the next few years.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Jeff, and it's an excellent question. So on the coal front, and I'll start there, because it's maybe the most immediate work that will take place. So the assessments that we're currently doing with respect to the sequence of how we will plan our coal fleet re-lifecycling will be important in determining what that initial footprint of staff will look like, but also the amount of work. So the assessments that we're undertaking right now with engineering firms who are coming into the Estevan area to look at those coal generators in detail will tell us exactly how much craft labor, other labor, that we'll need to bring on board with respect to each one of those. I'll remind everybody in this room, will recall the Boundary Dam, three re-lifecycling, that was a significant capital project for the corporation, one of the largest capital projects. Of course, it included a carbon capture facility. We anticipate the coal work will generate significant economic opportunity, and rather than just throwing out a number, we're having professional engineering, EPC, work done to actually be able to quantify that, and I appreciate that that, an important question for you, your worship, but the entire community, in terms of how you're planning for that growth going forward. You know, I noted earlier that, you know, final investment decision on SMRs won't occur until 2029, and, you know, that's roughly the same time cycle as that we'll be taking major coal generators into refurbishment, and so there's a compounding effect, if you will. The employment numbers on SMRs, and we know that a little bit with a little bit more certainty just because we're working in partnership with Ontario Power Generation and Tennessee Valley Authority and their deployment of the same technology, is about 1,800 people to build just one SMR, and you'll know in our planning, there's at least two going into, potentially going into the Estevan area. So, you know, there's going to be an overlap of nuclear development occurring at the same time coal development will occur, and so I would say to you, Mr. Ward, that, you know, we are, and we're willing to, you know, work with you in as much transparency as possible as we start to get greater certainty around with the workforce requirements that will be coming into the region, you can bet that we will, you'll be our first call on that front. You know, one of the challenges that we have as a corporation, we're working with our colleagues through Crown Investments Corporation, which is the whole core for all of the provincial Crown Corporations, is to work with other provincial ministries to ensure the regional college system, the polytechnic system, and the universities are also gearing up for what, you know, the workforce requirements will look like for SAS Power, but certainly even for the broader economy going forward. And so that work right now is underway. CIC is leading work on the workforce requirements for both coal workforce and nuclear workforce development, along with all the other ministries of the government, and when that work starts to crystallize and we have those numbers, I don't think it should take too long, we will certainly be bringing those back to your attention, and certainly to the attention of, is worship and council.
Excellent, excellent. Any other questions? Councillor Johnson?
Just a few questions with your coal generating plants and your rebuilds. I understand that there's a proposed shutdown for number five unit in the near future, and what would be done there would be just ordinary boiler work, or are you going to be going into all kinds of turbine generator work for the future? And then, as you do this work, that usually brings in around 200 to 300 contractors that come to the community, right? With all the shutdowns and all the different work that would be brought in, that we have to actually bring in the boiler workers in order to do the shielding and do all the boiler work inside the boiler, and do the piping and stuff like that.
Brian, I was going to call in a council member, I was going to call in an expert to answer the question, but I forgot, you are in fact, an expert, and I want to say thank you to your service to SAS Power for many, many years. You know, I've got, again, Corey Hayko, who's the Chief Operating Officer, and Corey, I'm just going to ask you to maybe if there's a mic that you can, you can just lean in on my mic here, and I'll step away.
Sure.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Rob. And Corey can share in detail, but you're exactly right, just a refurbishment alone, our typical work on any of the coal generators is about 300 or 400 people. So you can imagine a re-lifecycling will be a significant, because, you know, in theory and in practice, we'll be re-lifecycling more components in a coal generator than our typical refurb look at, we'll consider, we'll employ considerably more people, but I'll ask Corey just to speak specifically to the current work underway with respect to five, and maybe even four, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you're exactly right, you know, as we look at the units, there is significant work to repower these units, but these are long, longstanding, you know, parts of our company, and, you know, there's a lot of work that has to go to also understand what needs to be done, as well as bringing all the contractors, and you mentioned, so pretty much effective immediately, we are looking at repowering, or sorry, refurbishing BD4 so that it's ready to serve the grid if needed. So we're bringing it out of its lay-down mode, getting it prepared to run. BD5, we're going to continue to look at that as well. BD6 will be the first unit we will look at in terms of our refurb schedule, but we're looking at BD4, 5, and 6 all together with Shan, Poplar 1, and Poplar 2. So the other thing we're looking at very carefully is how we stage the work. You know, we can't do this all at once, there's not enough provincial workforce, as we even do maintenance today, sometimes the halls are empty, the trades are tough to find, so we're working very, very diligently to plan them so that we can get into it and just continue right through. So it'll start with BD4, the repairs to get that brought back online, and then we'll start planning out the lifecycle and refurbs of the rest of the coal units, which, you know, the effort will be significant. You know, I don't know the exact number, but likely in the numbers you refer to, it'd be something in that neighborhood, but more to come.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Councillor Robb.
Thank you, worship. Thank you again for coming. I was just curious too about, like, do you partner with the local college here to do some kind of training for the trades and promote kids who've been coming just out of high school, just go right into SAS Power for employment?
Thank you for that question, council member, and in fact, we do. You know, SAS Power has a number of employment programs targeted at youth, but even in particular in the Estevan area, where we have programs that will look at grade 11 students who will be making a transition, and we're interested in making sure that we're making pathways inside the company known to grade 11 students transitioning grade 12 and hopefully into our workforce. Those are focused primarily on lines trades, but beyond that, we do a significant amount of programming through the universities and the regional college system around trades and technical training, engineering, science, and technology, in particular with respect to women in the workforce, but in general with respect to youth in the workforce, and we're trying to encourage as many people coming into the company. Your questions are really great question, and you know, goes to the heart of the question that Jeff had asked earlier about what are the workforce requirements for all this work? We are, we will be going through a significant growth phase, so undertaking the current capital program that we have underway with respect to gas plants that are being renewed, wind and solar facilities that are coming on, and then re-lifecycling coal and adding nuclear to it will require a significant addition of workforce to the company just to help manage that volume and complexity of work. And so something we're looking at is how do we ensure that we have an adequate workforce inside the company? So we are doing that, and I think, you know, we support, you know, the Iced here in Estevan. I know there's an event tomorrow that SAS Power will be speaking at, and we're happy to be sponsors of that, and as well as the Technology Hub here in the city. So there's a number of fronts on which we're trying to make known pathways into the company, but also just connect to the broader post-secondary, secondary systems in the Estevan area, and I don't know, Corey, if you have any other comments on that?
Maybe the only comment I would add is, in the last two years, we've done extensive work in the Estevan area, expanding our apprenticeships, so operators, millwrights, boilermakers, we've now gone to full complement for apprentices, where in the past we had started to scale down, so we're back, we're back to our full numbers, and we've added quite a few positions in the apprenticeship range, so.
No, that's excellent to hear, because I know there's a lot of people who say that, you know, kids graduate from high school, a lot of them leave, and then they don't come back, so I'm happy to hear that there's a path for them to have a future here in Estevan with SAS Power still. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions out there? Councillor Dubowski.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to be the young one in the room here, and just ask regarding renewables. It's, I noticed you mentioned a good bit about your progress with renewable energy, and it's positive to hear that, but I do want to ask, if you're even able to answer such a question, generally, going forward, is the goal to play off of the, I guess, financial benefits of coal to then invest that more into renewables to try and get, or at least try and change kind of where the actual focus is for our energy generation, like, so we're kind of coal and renewables down here, is that the goal to kind of utilize coal to maybe shift it, or like, what's the, is there any sort of goal for changing, like, in terms of climate action and what we're doing for the future?
Yeah, it's a great question, and congratulations, councillor, I understand this is your first term in politics, I think, I don't know if you hold a record for the youngest council person in the history of Estevan, but you, we'd be close, so congratulations. That type of civic spirit, you know, stepping into politics is something to be commended, and I want to just, on behalf of myself and the team, congratulate you. It's a great question, and the question is really, you know, what's the mix of coal, nuclear, et cetera? And what I would suggest is that, you know, the minister has been really clear that we will take an all-of-the-above approach that's focused primarily through the lens of affordability and reliability of the power system. And so right now, although it's true that coal, you know, wind and solar are some of the lowest costs of power, because of their intermittency, you have to firm them essentially with gas. And so, you know, absent a carbon tax, coal would be one of the lowest costs of power that we'd have in our system, and so why there's such an interest, coal represents about 24% of our current generation, why there's an interest in focusing on re-lifecycling all of that coal is that it would create a low-cost pathway to nuclear. So if we can continue to invest in our coal assets, and we are, you know, afforded that opportunity by the federal government to continue to use those assets, and I understand those conversations are going well between the Minister and the Government of Canada, that that would be the ideal pathway, and I think you've heard the minister say this, and maybe even the premier of the province say this, that we're looking for a megawatt, for a megawatt replacement of coal with nuclear. And so, you know, as we deploy nuclear, and there's long lead times in deploying nuclear, even though the final investment decision on our first nuclear won't occur till 29, the likely in-service would be mid-2030, so 2034, 2035, if everything goes perfectly and according to plan, just for the first 300 megawatts, and we have 1,500 megawatts of coal operative in southeast Saskatchewan, and so, you know, you just kind of push that out typically to build one 300-megawatt units about for four years, and we'll see exactly what that is, because Darlington is the first, you know, the first BWRX 300s that are being built in Canada, in Ontario, so we'll know exactly what their schedule looks like, and so we'll be able to build that into ours. So I guess to answer your question just very directly, we'll use the lowest costs of power that we can, and there's a mix typically, if there's lots and lots of wind blowing, and it's at 100% capacity, because we know for the next eight hours it'll be blowing, it'll be our lowest cost of power, and absent that, just in terms of reliable baseload power, coal has always been a staple inside the SAS Power system.
Excellent.
It's a great question, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions out there? Seeing none, that was good. Again, I just want to thank you and your team for coming to visit council today, it means a lot, and SAS Power and the City of Estevan have obviously been partners for many years, and we look forward to creating that, continuing that relationship, and making it stronger into the future here, so thank you for coming in tonight.
Your worship, thank you so much for the invitation, and on behalf of the entire team, I just want to say thanks to you, and thanks to all the work of your council in supporting SAS Power and our good works in the area, so thank you.
For sure. Thank you. You're off the hook. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? It's presented.
I'll make the motion, I have a change.
You have a change?
Well, not really a change, it's just that there's a letter, and there's someone else that is not on the.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Councillor Johnson. All in favor? Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting September 8th, 2025. Councillor Dubowski, seconded by Councillor Elliott. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have another presentation tonight, we have the Food Cyclr presented by Maddie. Do we have Maddie? There she is online there, too, she's joining us online tonight on Zoom. So, yeah, Maddie, thanks for coming tonight, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for having me. I just requested to share, oh, there you go, okay, I'm going to share my screen. One second here, I hope you can all see that. So, good evening, Mayor, members of council and staff, thank you for having me. My name is Maddie Fromm, I am the Municipal Partnership Representative at Food Cycle Science, and I'm here tonight to discuss a framework for sustainable food waste management in the City of Estevan. And I reached out to Estevan and requested this delegation after meeting Councillor Mouse at FCM back in May, and so I just want to say thank you for stopping by our booth. So I'm sure you're all aware, you might be aware of who we are, but if not, so Food Cycle Science is a proud Canadian company, we're based We're based out of Ottawa and we are 100% focused on food waste diversion solutions. And we do that by using our innovative technology called the Food Cyclr. So our in-home food waste recyclers sold direct to consumers. We partner with businesses and classrooms through not-for-profit organizations. And then through our municipalities like yours, through our Food Cyclr Municipal Solutions Division. And that's what I'm talking about today. So to date, we've partnered with more than 175 Canadian municipalities in nine provinces and two territories. Uh, small rural and remote communities work with us as well as densely populated cities. And we help them divert their food waste to save on waste management costs. So in Saskatchewan, we have two programs so far, that are in the arm of Mcilop and the town of Maple Creek. But the communities that partner with us, uh, do so for the same reason. They understand that there's an issue when food waste ends up in the landfill and they've decided to make a change. So over the last few years, the issue surrounding food waste has become a common topic of discussion for many reasons. One of the reasons is that when food waste is improperly disposed of, it produces the greenhouse gas methane. Now, if food loss and waste were country, it would actually be the third highest greenhouse gas emitting nation behind the U S and China. When we talk about reducing our carbon footprint, uh, food waste really isn't something that we can ignore. It's the low hanging fruit to improving the environment with the solution being very simple and right in front of us. You know, you can buy less, you can use your leftovers, and then when the time comes, you can dispose of the food waste properly. So now how does this impact municipalities like yours? Well, since food waste makes up such a large portion of the waste stream, it's about half of household waste, believe it or not, it causes landfills to fill up very quickly. As you know, operating a landfill or managing waste in general is very expensive for a municipality. So we do just want to try and extend the lifespan as much as possible and take the burden off of waste. Now, as mentioned, when organic waste is put in landfills, it produces methane gas. Uh, with a major focus being put on reducing our emissions, reducing food waste is a priority, given that it's a very solvable challenge. We've already seen across the country that, uh, provincial provinces are putting pressure on municipalities to implement source separated organics programs, which are very expensive. Then at the community level, food waste in the garbage means more frequent click, uh, collection or trips to the disposal site, putting food waste in there, which also causes odors. It's not very nice, it's, um, unpleasant. But then those odors attract animals like bears, raccoons who love to rub against their trash. So if we're able to remove food waste from the garbage, we're going to be able to eliminate all of these issues and save on costs. So at this point, I'm sure you're already thinking, haven't we solved this already? Uh, and yes, there's a few solutions out there. So green bins are common in big cities with high population density and the right infrastructure. However, these can be, um, caught, they're cost prohibitive or operationally challenging to implement in a more rural or remote area. We've also seen across the country, green bins struggle to get above a 40 to 60% participation rate. Um, I live in Ottawa and we've had a curbside green bin for 15 years. And despite, you know, years of education, uh, the city is only at 57% participation rate, meaning a lot of organics, they'll just end up in the landfill. Now, some people in their community might backyard compost. I'm sure we all agree this is the ideal solution. Uh, but unfortunately backyard composting still has its challenges. It's not a year-round solution, um, it's not feasible for everybody. You might not have a backyard, um, so it's not something that we can implement community-wide well. And then finally, you could continue to throw your organic waste into the landfill. But as I mentioned, the long-term impacts are costly and harmful to the environment. So with the Food Cyclr, we make food waste easy to manage and right in the home. Essentially, we've built a small kitchen appliance about the same size as an air fryer. It's really simple to use. You put your food waste into a machine, push a button, and then in a matter of hours, uh, your food waste has been transformed into a nutrient-rich soil amendment. It handles all types of food waste. That includes meats, pets, bones, um, your typical vegetable scraps, starches, all those good stuff, dairy. Um, it can be used anywhere with a plug. So most people keep it in their kitchen, but you could put it in a basement or a heated garage. Each cycle takes about four to eight hours to complete and uses about one kilowatt hour of power per cycle. And the cost depends on the grid you're on, but it would be about 10 to 15 cents. And then the resulting soil amendment has many, uh, benefits and I'm going to talk about them next. So the end product we've created is your food waste that's been reducing weight and volume up to 90%, leaving it completely dry and sterile and inert biomass. Um, so it has many beneficial uses. You can use it to fertilize your garden right at home, but you could also add it to any type of backyard composting system. It integrates well into a beef and yard waste system. Uh, you could drop it off at a compost site, a community garden, uh, a local farm. Or if you had a green bin, you can add it to that, but it's a very versatile product that you're left with at the end. Now, in terms of the environmental, uh, footprint, when you look at the carbon footprint of the Food Cyclr, the impact's very clear. Over a seven-year period, the Food Cyclr was actually a net negative carbon solution. So the graph on the left breaks down emissions. And while there are some upfront emissions from manufacturing, energy use and end-of-life disposal, uh, these are far outweighed by the emissions avoided from food waste not going to the landfill. So the result is a net negative carbon footprint, meaning that the Food Cyclr ultimately prevents more emissions than it produces. So you can feel good about using it. In addition to the environmental impact, the traditional method of managing organic waste is a heavily burdened system with cost at every step. But the Food Cyclr is a decentralized approach that avoids unnecessary additional labor costs, greenhouse gas emissions from trucking improper food waste breakdown and infrastructure costs to the municipality where the residents. The food waste created in the home can be easily managed right in the home. Now, for residents, one of the biggest benefits we hear is how easy and clean the experience is. Typically, food waste is associated with the ick factor. So that's that smelly, wet, moldy mess it creates. But because the Food Cyclr turns it into a dry, sterile and odorless end product, the ick factor's gone. Um, and of course, one of the best results from using, uh, the Food Cyclr is that you have so much less trash going to the curb. So on average, households are putting out about 50 less garbage bags per year as a result of using the Food Cyclr. The photo on the slide, I think I need to brush the line. So the photo on the slide is, uh, from our resident in one of our municipal programs who couldn't just, uh, help but share how little trash she was generating. So believe it or not, it is that small little bag on the curb there. Now, the Food Cyclr program is an established and proven solution for food waste management with participation rates over 90% and an average of, uh, 300 kilograms of food waste diverted per household per year. The results from our pilot projects have been just overwhelmingly positive. Um, and one of the nice side effects that we're noticing is it's increasing residents' awareness and, um, prevention of food waste. So once they see how much food waste they're generating in the home, it's, um, motivating people to produce less food waste, uh, which is overall good for everybody. So our pilot program is a typical 12-week pilot designed to test the viability of the food waste, uh, diversion solution in your community before considering a community-wide rollout. Here's how it works, very simple. Residents who signed up would receive a fully subsidized Food Cyclr from the municipality. Over 12 weeks, they'll use their unit and track the number of cycles that they complete at, at each week. At the end, uh, participants will keep their Food Cyclrs, they can keep using it. All we ask is they complete a quick survey so we can evaluate the program's success. We then compile those results and present them back to you. Um, along with this report or this feasibility study of the results, uh, we would also provide a recommended plan for expanding the program to more households. Uh, but we'd work with staff to make sure that that plan aligns with your community needs and your budget. So the pricing for our programs is very straightforward. Food Cycle Science provides a discount. We reduce the cost by 50%. And then the municipality would, uh, subsidize the remaining amount. So an eco three ends up being $300 and eco five is $400. And then participating residents choose which model, uh, best suits their needs and they bring that unit home at no upfront cost to them. So for initial pilots in Estevan, I would recommend a 100-household program. This size would provide enough, um, data to, you know, generate meaningful, uh, statistics at the end so that we can, um, assess, uh, your food waste management, um, and provide a strategic plan for rollout in the future. Uh, so fully subsidizing 100 Food Cyclrs based on a 50-50 split of units would give out $35,000 plus shipping and taxes. But that said, this is just a starting point. We're always happy to work with you to design a program that fits for your community's needs and budget. So for example, if you don't want to do a 50-50 split, we could just offer one unit. Um, and then that would change the budget accordingly. So lastly, here are some reasons that may resonate with you as you consider whether you should pilot with us. The first is you have the opportunity to trial this technology at well below market rates uh, and test an organics diversion service before fully implementing. You're also going to be able to see some immediate and impactful benefits like waste diversion, lower disposal costs and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. But overall, you're able to provide your residents with a low-cost municipal service while being a steward for the environment. So I welcome the city of Estevan as a partner in the fighting of food waste as I believe your community would be a great fit for this program. Today, all I ask is you receive my presentation as information. And should there be interest in partnering with us, that you refer to staff for a report and recommendation. Uh, so thank you so much. I am prepared to answer questions and I will stop sharing with you.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Uh, questions out there for? Counselor Dubowski?
Thank you, your worship. Um, not necessarily a question per se, just a idea I thought of while, um, hearing the presentation. I saw mention of being able to add this to fertilizer, soil for garden. I just think it'd be kind of cool to have some of these in different parts of the community. And then these different areas having their own little community gardens and being able to use this for said community gardens. You grow, grow the garden and then you get nice fresh fruit out of it or vegetables or whatever else. And you add it back and it's kind of just a continuing cycle. We get less food waste to the landfill, people get fresh food. So I just thought it was a cool little idea that was, uh, something to mention.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Add anything to that, Maddie?
No, oh, no, I think it's a, it's a great thought and it's exactly kind of where we're going. So I'm so thrilled to hear you say that. Um, yeah, the, with using the Food Cyclr, we can create a really nice circular economy. Um, and it just kind of keeps, uh, keeps going. And the food, the food, it's called food alizer, that's what we've kind of termed it, that dry, uh, product you're left with at the end. It's just so useful. So there's so many different things that we can do and we really collaborate with you to figure out the best way to manage it.
Excellent. Counselor Varova?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Maddie, for the presentation. Um, I was here on council the last time that you guys, um, came, did a presentation. So, uh, thank you for the refresher. But also I think this is something that would be interesting to put on coffee talk with council. Um, this would actually be a subject matter that I would be interested in finding out just how many residents would be interested in participating, um, in this type of program? And if people have an interest to actually have the municipality actually subsidize this program? So, yeah, I think, um, if I could make that recommendation or that motion that we have it, uh, put to a coffee talk subject. And then after that, we can look at having a report.
Sounds good. Do we have a second there? Counselor Johnson?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments out there? Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, just a question to Maddie and thank you for your presentation. I know that there's a lot of people in and around the community that have these compost, uh, bins or, and they do a lot of gardening still in their yards. And they like to have their, um, shrubbery or their, uh, yards looking really great. And it just might save them from running down and going to the local, uh, hardware store and, and picking up a bag of fertilizer when they know that they can do their own homegrown. And, uh, it's an interesting concept. And I know, uh, it's something to be talked about and also, uh, helping them, uh, understand that their city is behind them. And then, uh, they can be also utilizing their waste as, as, uh, future nutrients for their soils. Okay, so that was a very good presentation and I think it, it, it's good for recycling. It's good for the climate change conditions that we do see occurring widespread across, uh, this world. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments out there? We had a second there with Counselor Johnson. Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. Well, we'll chat about it at the coffee talk and we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much for having me. Sorry for those who've heard the presentation before, uh, but yeah, happy to be here. Hope you have a great rest of your meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Up next, the GFL current report for August 2025. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Johnson, Counselor Dubowski, seconded. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, St. Joseph's Foundation Event Permit. This already, is it Christmas already? Festival of Trees looking for just approval for their event permit. Do we have a motion to approve that? Counselor Varova, seconded by Counselor Dubowski. Counselor Willezer, questions, comments? I don't hear a second. So no questions, comments out there, all in favor? Carried, event permit. And up next is the Festival of Trees again, looking to sell us a table. Do we have a motion to purchase a table? Counselor Johnson?
I'll make the motion that we do purchase a table for this event.
Okay, excellent. Do we have a second there for that? Counselor Varova? Questions, comments on the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Uh, executive reports. City manager strategic plan.
Thank you, your worship. So at the last council meeting, uh, there was a motion to develop a plan, uh, to do some strategic planning with council for the next four-year term. So our last one was done in 2021 and we did that, uh, with Doug Griffith. Um, so it's probably time to look at this for the next four-year cycle. So a report's been put, uh, forward in front of you on what the next steps of that looks like. So, uh, usually three stages in there, uh, a questionnaire with council, uh, discussion with management on priorities and then drafting something for public, uh, consultation and development. So, uh, I've set out some dates in there. So council will be able to see some sort of survey coming out here very quickly and we'll start moving through that process and hopefully that meets the needs of council. And we would generally do it for another four-year term. So when, when councils first get on, there is about a year where, uh, you're still dealing with, um, leftover items from the previous council term and budget. So I think doing another four-year cycle now, uh, starting for the 2026 year makes a lot of sense. So, um, I'm open to any feedback, uh, but understanding that we can get those questions out to council fairly quickly and start setting those priorities.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to accept the planning process for strategic planning? Counselor Varova? Seconded by Counselor Willezer? Any questions, comments out there? Counselor Varova?
Thank you, your worship. Um, to the city manager, I really do like that part in here, number 10, with develop the reporting structure because I think that also will help moving forward to the next council that comes on for that first year. Then it kind of gets them involved into what the actual, um, strat plan was from the last council and gives them an idea if that's something they want to carry forward or make some changes. So, no, really good report and I think that's great. Thank you.
Excellent. Any more questions, comments out there? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, we have Water Services Manager After Hours Plugged Sewer. So this was tabled from the last, did you have anything?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, uh, our Water Services Manager is away right now, but I can speak to this a little bit. So we're taken back to see what these fees kind of look like, um, and how many call-outs we had. I know there was a concern that even if we start charging a fee for after-hours, that, um, it still would be taxing our staff. As you can see, if people have the opportunity to use a plumber in, at a lower cost, I think that reduces the number of call-ins. So, uh, I think this helps reduce our, um, um, staffing requirements, but also that if we are having to come out after-hours, that there is some revenue towards the city and that the free augers will be done during the day. So, uh, I support the recommendation put here by, uh, Matt Angel, the, uh, the manager of water services.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to accept? Counselor Elliott? Seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any questions or comments? Pretty, pretty basic. Counselor Willezer?
Thank you, your worship. My request is that we review this again next fall and make sure that any of the concerns that had come up about taxes on the staff or whether the cost was prohibited enough, uh, can be revisited at that time once we have a year of data to look at.
Okay, excellent. So a one-year review, can we add that to the motion, city clerk? We're good, we're good. Good, thank you for that, Counselor Willezer. So any more questions, comments out there? Seeing none, all in favor? We'll see you in a year. Uh, Water Services Manager, Smith Street Tender. This is a bigger project and we kind of put this off a few times. I haven't always said any more.
Thank you, your worship. So, uh, this is some electrical and pumping that needs to be done at the Smith Street reservoir. So as everybody knows, we did rehabilitate the water tower after the few years. And this is kind of the next phase of that to make sure Smith Street is operating, uh, at, uh, full, full capacity here. So, uh, we did budget this as a winter project. So, uh, it was estimated there was about $400,000 in this year and within, uh, a likelihood of $400,000 in January of 2026. So, uh, we did have about an $800,000 estimate that was discussed, a budget. You can see that the bid price is about $820- So, uh, we did have about an eight hundred thousand dollar estimate that was discussed, a budget. You can see that the bid price is about eight twenty-seven, uh, here. So we will take this to budget deliberations to ensure that we capture that additional twenty-seven thousand. There is also some alternatives that were recommended by the bidders that will also be part of that budget discussion, but I don't want to speak to those. I will let, uh, Water Services Manager speak to that at budget, uh, on how we move forward on those potential alternatives. So, uh, just to make sure, there is, I think, a thirty-week lead time on some of these pumps that are required, so, uh, need to get, um, this moving. We did use Associated Engineering, uh, to, uh, conduct this RFP and did the ru- do the whole review process and their whole matrix. So, uh, I believe our Water Services Manager has recommended we go with the recommendations from Associated Engineering to go with CCR construction for the eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Excellent. Do we have a motion? Counsel Varova, seconded by Counsel Johnson. Questions, comments? Counsel Varova?
Thank you, worship. I am happy that it came pretty close to the budget. Um, my only question is, when we're accepting this tender right now, so my motion would be to accept the tender with the alternative one and two attached, as long as it can fit into our next year's budget. So my question is, by doing that, we're not actually committing to CCR construction today for both alternative one and two. We're committing that we are going to look at the budget, but we're going to commit to the eight twenty-seven, eight thirty? Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure that we don't have to re-tender this. We want to stick with CCR. We go with alternative one and two. We stick with CCR.
Correct.
Okay, that's my motion. Thank you.
Okay. Secondary for that, or do we have a second there? Counsel Johnson?
Seconded.
Okay, Counsel Johnson, any more questions, comments out there? See you none. All in favor? Carried. Building Permit Report for August twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counsel Elliot? Seconded by Counsel Debowski. Any questions, comments out there? See you none. All in favor? Carried. Up next, Introduction of Bylaws. Up first is Bylaw Twenty Twenty-Five Twenty-One Hundred to Enact the Safe Public Spaces. Now, this is something that kind of came new out from the provincial government just this summer. The main thing behind it is just another tool for, uh, any police force, but obviously our EPS, to handle with the ongoing changes of life that we see every day out there. So do we have anybody to send it the first reading? Motion to accept the public? Counsel Elliot? Seconded by Counsel Walezer. Any, I guess we can't get your questions or comments till we get the second reading? Uh, yeah, no, nor- normally, um, th- this one came from the Police Board, and, uh, it, it has the approval and the blessing of EPS as well, to, uh, give them another tool. So, uh, instead of sending it the first reading, I send it to pub- Public Communications. It's kind of already been through a couple structures of communications. Um, so we would actually, I, I need a second there for the first reading first, right?
You have a secondary. You just need to vote on.
Oh, so. Okay, so first reading, let's vote on that first. All in favor? Carried. So now, we're going to do something out of the ordinary.
You're going to go to second reading, and then you're going to ask for it to be studied to be waived on third. We need to do five different.
Okay, which?
Go here.
Okay. So for second reading, we, do we have a motion to accept second reading? Counsel Varova, seconded by Counsel Johnson. Now, what are we doing?
Now you're going to ask for this. Ask if they can do three readings at this meeting.
So I guess, so we have, we're in the second reading. We have a second there. No more questions or comments? Do we need approve, Counsel?
I just want to make sure that the people that are reading it, just because, um, we didn't read the entire bylaw out. And so just to basically summarize, the purpose of the proposed bylaw is to allow the city to opt into the new rules set out by the Governor of Saskatchewan in the Safe Public Spaces Street Weapons Act that regulate the possession, transportation, and storage of items that may be used as street weapons, such as large knives, machetes, or bear spray. The Act defines street weapons as any of the following: a knife, a sword, a machete, an axe, a hammer, a sledgehammer, body armor, an explosive device, a hypodermic needle, fentanyl, methamphetamine, a wildlife control product, any other prescribed item. The Act also notes the definition of knife does not include the following: an article that is worn for religious purposes, not intended to use as a weapon, or a knife or other bladed instrument, and the total length of the blade is less than thirty centimeters. So, or any other length set by municipal bylaw. So just, I guess I just want to clarify that those are the kind of things that we're saying this will give the, our police department more power in our city, which is a good thing. And the other reason why I think that we're okay proceeding with second and third tonight is because this has had a lot of notice from the provincial government. So most of the due diligence, or if not all, has already been done by the provincial government, and this is just something that is going to give our police more teeth to make sure that our community is safer. So I am one hundred percent in agreement with moving this forward tonight.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that, for reading that for me. Counsel Debowski?
Uh, thank you, worship. I was thinking the same thing, but I also wanted to, because I had asked City Clerk about this, and I'm sure there are probably other, um, citizens in Estevan that have probably the same question. If City Clerk could just clarify what, I guess, what does this do that doesn't already exist, or that does, that we don't actually have?
Your worship to Counsel Debowski. So the bylaw that I've put to the floor is just accepting the Act in its totality. We are not breaking out any pieces of the Act or anything. We are saying that our community would like to support this Act and give our EPS people the ability to utilize the terms and conditions inside the Act.
And to what, I guess you mentioned to me earlier, I just want to make sure this is out and people are aware. What you mentioned was, there is no, like, current, I guess, um, specifications on if these, uh, weapons that are listed in here are actually enforceably illegal or something like, how did you mention? I can't even remember, like.
So we, we are not removing any conditions that are.
Right.
The Act. We are only just approving the act so it can be.
Right.
Utilized in the city of Estevan, and we are not adding any other terms or conditions onto the Act, such as fines or penalty or anything like that.
I guess what I'm trying to, like, there's no current bylaw or law that, I guess, makes any of these weapons illegal. That's why this is bringing, being brought. Okay, correct. Okay, that's, I just wanted to get that and make sure that's clear, in case anyone else had a similar question to what I had about this. Thank you.
Great. Any questions, comments out there for second reading? See you none. All in favor? Okay, and now we need a motion that referral of Bylaw Twenty Twenty-Five Twenty-One Hundred to Council and Committee for a study to be waived.
Yes.
Do we have a motion for that? Counsel Johnson? Seconded by Counselor Walezer. Any questions or comments on that? See you none. All in favor? Carried.
Oh, Counsel Walezer.
Oh.
Your worship, I do not want to second that motion. I would like to speak against it once the second there has been found.
Counsel Varova seconds the motion. Counselor Walezer?
I think, uh, as evidenced by the discussion in chambers tonight, this is more complicated, um, than just making our community safer, and that in order for the community to understand and meaningfully benefit from this Safe Public Spaces Act that the province has suggested, we need to have a coordinated approach, both with council and EPS, to engage community members. And I would like to see that happen before the Act goes into effect. So I do not agree that we should waive the two-week community consultation process.
Hey, thank you for that. Any questions, comments out there? Counsel Debowski?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, yeah, I just, I just want to agree with Counsel Walezer that, I think there should be some sort of engagement between all of us, so we all know, are on the same page of what's being brought forward.
Okay. Counsel Varova?
Um, I'm a hundred percent in agreement that we need to have some sort of public engagement. I just don't think we need to stall the reading of the second and third in order to do that. I don't think we're going to change this. This, in my opinion, this isn't something that we made up. It's something that the province put forward, and so we're just saying that we are going to adopt exactly what the province said. So I think the public consultation, um, education maybe, is what needs to happen after, so that everybody, um, understands what it is. Again, two weeks, is it going to make or break? Maybe not. But I also like the idea that we're getting a lot of, uh, feedback from the community, that we're having a lot more, uh, incidents happening with people. And at every day that our police go out, they are tackling people that, um, interacting with people, not tackling, they're tackling the issue, but they're interacting with people who have some of these things in their possession. And from my understanding, by en- enacting this bylaw, this is going to give our police department the tools they need. It's another tool in their tool belt in order to say, if you are possession of any of these items, we now have, uh, just a little bit more teeth in, in the game. So I'm, again, I'm in favor of it.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions, comments out there? Counsel Johnson?
Mayor Sernick, I'm definitely in support of having some public consultation with this, uh, new act, this new bylaw. Just for the public and just for the reasons that, uh, a lot of, uh, different, uh, types of weaponry and, uh, different types of, uh, clarification on what people might be having in their vehicles, and, uh, should they ever get pulled over, they have some of these things in their vehicle or in their possession. They better be aware that there's a new act, there's new laws stating that maybe those items should be, uh, be careful with and be not used. So versus just approving it for a third reading tonight, have it out there, having the police enforce on it, this new law, and, uh, hearing all the complaints that we might hear in the community. If someone did get pulled over and have, uh, an axe in their vehicle, or a hatchet in the back of their truck or something like that, and they do have it pulled from them, and they do get a fine, or they do get a warning, or they do get anything, and they don't know that this law is out there, I think we need to do our due diligence here and make it to the public, show them that this is coming, and these are the terms and conditions and the awareness for the community. I have no problem with that, and then approving it later. I think we need to make that step forward at least. Thank you.
Your worship, so we did have a motion on the floor. Can you just say who made the motion and who seconded it?
Counsel Johnson, uh, made the motion, and Counsel.
Varova seconded it, so.
So I'm just going to say, like, I don't know if we can oppose something that we made the motion on.
That's fine, but we also, we also need to be aware of.
That's fine. We also need to be aware of this. If we do approve it, and it goes to third reading here this evening, we're, we're instructing our Estevan police force to uphold this bylaw, and, and this is what's going to happen if we go there with the third reading. So be careful. Like, I'm, I'm.
It's what our EPS is asking of us.
Yeah.
Right. No, a hundred percent. I think a hundred percent education in the community is definitely needed.
I, I can give you a classic example of what I'm talking about. So, many years ago, when the buses started stopping at all these, uh, bus stops around the community, there's a new law in the community, and I wasn't aware of it. And when they started stopping, that red flag went out on the side of the buses for stopping. If people went through those stop signs, they got a big fine. We didn't do a very good job of releasing to the public that we had proved that in the community. I wasn't even aware of it. So I want to make you sure that we're doing our due diligence here, and we make the public aware of changes like this that are occurring in our, our community. Thank you.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. I just, what I, I guess what I'm referring to is, you made the motion to waive the study, and now you're saying you don't want to waive the study. So that's why I'm saying, are you rescinding your motion?
I'll definitely have.
Should we send it then? I'm sorry.
We're going to send it to vote, actually. We have a motion, and we have a second there. We've had debate, so we're going to send it to a vote, correct?
All in favor, yep.
So, again, the referral, uh, to council and committee for the study to be waived. All in favor?
And I'm sorry, I did not get who's on the screen.
And so opposed?
Opposed, I have Counsel Johnson, or Counselor Walezer and Counselor Debowski. Is that where we're at?
Where were you, Tom?
He's in sport.
In favor?
I was, uh, others.
In favor? Okay.
With, uh, four wa- four waving.
Okay.
Okay.
So then I moved to.
Third reading?
Yep. That it be given three readings at this meeting?
Also, we need a motion to send it.
Waiving the study now. It's three to, yeah.
This is all new, folks. Uh, so now we are at that, we need a motion that we be given three readings at this meeting here tonight. Counsel Elliot, seconded by. Do we have a second there to send it to third reading? Counsel Varova? Questions, comments?
Thank you, your worship. We just had one question. So we've got this list of items. Someone's driving along. They get pulled over, missed a stop sign or something. The policeman sees a, an axe in the back. Are they instantly arrested, or is this the kind of thing where they're going to assess the individual, the situation? Like, we're not just making these items illegal. It's intent or?
Yes, it's, 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 uh, it's, it's not that you have an axe in your vehicle that they're gonna, you know, take you to the Hoosgow. It's if you are using it in an appropriate manner while EPS comes on or gets phoned in, and that goes with the fentanyl and meth, obviously. Uh, those are the two biggest things on this list, um, that, that, uh, are EPS and police services around Saskatchewan and probably the world, actually. We know that, that, you know what I mean, that those two are the most important things. And everything else just gives them more ammo in case they are being used inappropriately or illegally, I guess would be the word. So. Counsel Varova?
Thank you, worship. I just really want to encourage the word education on this, because I do agree with you, Counsel Johnson and Counsel Walezer, that we need to make sure that we have education out there, so the general public does not wake up tomorrow and think that we just made something a bylaw where now there, it's illegal to have an axe in the back of your truck when you're outgoing, uh, do whatever you're doing with your axe. I think this is the teeth that the EPS need. It's not to pull over the average citizen who is just out, um, going, doing their yard work. I just think, I think a hundred percent, we need to really encourage EPS to do the education behind this por- portion, because I think it's going to be best coming from them.
Excellent. Not a problem there. Counsel Debowski?
Uh, thank you, worship. I just also want to mention, like, I guess to the other counselors, that we should probably be prepared for, response from the public, that I'm sure there will probably be some members that are going to come to us and say, you guys just rammed this through without any consultation or anything. So I just want to, like, say, be prepared for that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you for the threat. So we are second there. Any other questions, comments?
Hi, I just, sorry to interrupt. Uh, thank you, Mayor Sernick. It's just a matter of, uh, comments that, uh, that I've heard. This isn't, this, uh, this legislation was put through by the province, and all we're doing is accepting it. This legislation is possibly valid in Weber, in Ostraw, in Prince Albert, and it might not be valid in other municipalities. It's not like we're ramming through anything that's sort of new or different, because every municipality in Saskatchewan has to accept this, the province law in that, in that municipality.
Thank you for that. Do we have questions, comments on this? Send it to the three readings. Counsel Walezer?
Again, we're going back to the intent of that Act. It's really important that we focus on the use of where this item is. So it is only regulating safe public urban spaces as defined in the provincial Act. So your private vehicle, your company works site with a hammer, that is not what the discussion is here. Looking at the provincial legislation that the. Looking at the provincial legislation that the bylaw is based on, specifically identify public gathering spaces, HARP, that is what this bylaw is looking to enact. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments? Seeing none. So all in favor of sending it for three readings tonight?
Same four? Or you, Counselor Dubowski is a yes? Okay, so the only one opposed is Counselor Wallyser? Is that correct?
All opposed? Did we make her to third reading?
We did.
Do we have a motion for third reading? Counselor Veroba, seconded by Counselor Elliott? Questions, comments? I think we got everything out there that we need to get out there. All in favor? Thank you for that, and I'm sure EPS will thank us as well. All opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed? Counselor Wallyser? Excellent. Up next, bylaw twenty twenty-five, twenty-one oh-one, to amend the records retention bylaw. We're only going one reading on this one tonight. City Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship. So currently, we have a records retention and disposal bylaw. It was drafted in two thousand, so it's been on my to-do list for a very long time. We want to ensure that the new bylaw captures specifically electronic filing. Things have changed tremendously since two thousand. Those have to be recognized, even though you can't see the record because it's hidden in the background, it still exists. So this is the new bylaw that we've drafted. It's been run through um, the leadership team uh, twice. And this is what we've come up with, so I'm asking for first reading tonight.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to accept first reading? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Wallyser? We have no, we can't do questions or comments. All in favor? Everybody's in favor. Thank you for that. Uh, giving notice, Clean Sweep, October third to the fifth, which is coming up quick. Uh, Friday, October third, eight AM to five PM, and Saturday and Sunday are ten AM to four PM, free landfill weekend. Except for anything else you want to throw away. No, I'm just kidding. So that'll be coming up. Do we have a motion to accept Operation Clean Sweep for this year again? Counselor Dubowski, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? Carried, I think. Yeah, sorry. Just a little delay on the old zoomer. Oh, sorry. You're in favor? Okay, excellent. Uh, no motions for committee. Consideration of bylaws. This one's been going on for a little bit here, the rezoning. Counselor Wallyser?
Thank you, your worship. Due to a friendship with the developer, I would like to fix whoever conflict and I will leave them. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, this is due to the uh, bylaw and rezoning on Wellock Road. Uh, last, last time we were at meeting here, we were sent, sent it back to Sector One to do a little more public engagement, so if you'd like to both come up and just give us a little update on how the public engagement went, and then we will get to the vote. Turn the microphone on, please. Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, your worship and council members. Um, after the last council, you asked us to do another public open house. Um, so we held that last Thursday. Um, we did some advertising through local business and on Facebook, we reached about fifty-eight hundred people locally. Uh, we held it uh, from four to seven PM at the old Thunder City building here, which we purchased back in March, I think. We're currently renovating that to be our new showroom to build RTMs and sell modular and RTMs in Estevan. Um, we had three people in three hours. We had the director, I believe her name is Marissa, from the Chamber of Commerce come. I think she was more just coming as a chamber, just to get more information. She had seen what we were doing and was really interested to see the details and what our plans were. Uh, we had a lady from Hawks Bay come. Um, she was in for about five minutes. I asked her if she had any questions. She said no, toured our information and left. Um, and then we had Corey Case Moore, who's been at the previous council meetings, vocalizing his concerns and questions. Uh, he came in about twenty minutes before we ended, and I stayed with him and answered all his questions till about seven thirty, stayed late that night. Um, he had a lot of great questions. I think I answered them all. Specifically around like what our plan is for the whole development. Because they're currently, they're zoned for about a three hundred unit trailer park in the back of that development. Um, I think you guys have all seen that a couple of times now. Um, so part of our planning is, is to complete the bottom half of that development and where the mobile home park currently is. Uh, we want to turn that into maybe two or three acre lots. We, we have no intention of, of a mobile home park. I think that was one of his big concerns, same with some of the use of single-family homes, so. Other than that, it was pretty low turnout. We had more staff there than people through the night. But I think overall, it was good. We invited Corey like personally on, online, and I'm glad he came to ask his questions, so. Yeah, um, other than that, I don't, I don't know what else I can say about our open house, but I'm happy to answer questions. Yeah, that's what I have.
Excellent. Do we have any questions, comments out there? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor Sernick, uh, also you provided us with a uh, an overview plan of how many lots would be taken up. I see is the red line you got on the drawing.
The seven lots?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So that is another thing that uh, we can see and look at. Basically, we had a lot of concerns about how much space is actually going to be used and we can see it there now, so.
I believe that was provided at, at last council as well.
Okay.
Um, just so we're only, we thought it was a good compromise with the public feedback. A lot of the people in Hawks Bay and Irvine said, um, you know, the, the face of this new development is all going to be rentals, and we thought that was a good point. So we, we amended our ask to just do seven lots directly across from that city pump station. Where we felt like, you know, if I was buying a new home in Estevan, I probably wouldn't build it across from that.
Great, excellent. Counselor Veroba?
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Uh, a couple of the concerns that I've heard uh, last couple of days has been, A, the parking. Uh, they don't want to see parking on the north side of Wellock if you guys proceed with uh, high-density housing over there, mostly because of the daycare, but also because of what happens in other cities where they have high-density um, housing and then they don't have enough parking. So what happens is people end up parking their extra vehicles on the street. And we already know that Wellock has a history of blowing in with the snow. And then what will happen is we'll be down to one lane of traffic with people trying to get their kids in there. So that was the concern. And then the other concern is if you guys proceed with just the two um, units without it being actual houses out front, and then nothing else happens in that development. So that's the other concern is that um, again, just two come up and then we have just two units there for, forever and ever, but. So those are kind of the two basic main stepping points that are still being talked about with me anyways.
Thank you for that.
Can I respond or?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't know. Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're, they're valid concerns. Parking is in the engineering phase and permitting phase, so as you know, the daycare doesn't even have an engineering traffic study or traffic permit yet. I believe they'll have to have an approach off of Wellock. I could be wrong. Um, but with our parking all in the back, it would be the same thing. We're not going to do engineering studies or move to that phase unless we get this rezoned. Um, your point about only doing two buildings, um, I don't see that as something that would ever happen, but it is a valid concern. I would say two buildings are a better snow fence than none. That's not a great point, but like, we, we have a hundred and eighteen acres there. We intend to use it all. Um, it'll probably be a five, seven-year project. I'm, I'm very hopeful that the city is going to grow and we can help grow with it. But yeah, I, the only other point I want to make, I think social media, especially these days, makes it very difficult, but we tend to hear the vocal minority over any kind of majority who's for things. When I, as an unbiased citizen, like in this case, I'm obviously very biased, but if I ask other local businesses, I called all the realtors, everybody I've talked to is in favor of this. I've talked to Hawks Bay and heard their concerns. And they had very valid concerns, and I thought we made a good compromise. So I'm not sure if the onus is on us. It probably is. You know, next time, this was our first time ever presenting anything at council, maybe we do some more. I, I'm not sure if it's surveys or get signatures or what you guys want to see, but I'm not sure if, if realtors have been phoned, small businesses, because typically business owners or people for something like this are not going to go on Facebook or call you and say that they're for this.
Hey, any other questions, comments out there? Counselor Dubowski?
Thank you, worship. Just to um, comment on Counselor Veroba's, the, the parking issue, I believe at the last council meeting, I had brought that up. And uh, if I recall, I guess the response was that it would, it could be left as it is currently, and if, if it becomes an issue, or if during um, traffic studies, it's found that it'll be an issue, we can just paint the, the sidewalk and not allow parking there. So that's, I guess, to address that concern, I, because I did, I did bring that up at the um, last council meeting. Um, yeah, that was it.
Good, thank you for that. All right, questions, comments? I think we're all good. Do we have a motion for second reading? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Dubowski. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? I was looking for Counselor Wallyser, but she's not here. All right. Third and final reading. Do we have a motion for third and final reading? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Dubowski. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Same vote. It is passed. Thank you, guys. Like, yeah, there was lots of compromises and I think everybody learned, everybody learned a lot in this process, which, which was great. And uh, the best part, as I always say, is, you know what I mean, people that had the concerns and questions, it's if you say nothing, nothing happens, so. It was good. Thank you, guys. Inquiries, did we make her? Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, worship. I actually had a few inquiries. Uh, one was a street sign on Third Avenue, I believe. And that one was taken care of by our roads and drainage. And then also um, the other one was a Fourth Street one, which I believe our Parks Department took care of, or Fourth Avenue, sorry, and that was Fourth Avenue and Perkins. That stop sign there quite often gets uh, overgrown by the home that's on the corner there, so I just want to really put it on our agenda for next year too, because it has been taken care of now, I believe, as well, but there was a person that was from out of province this summer that literally blew through that stop sign, almost got hit, and they had mentioned it to me. And back in the day, actually, back nine years of days, that, that's always been brought up every year, so it's just something we could put on our radar. The other thing is, I've had inquiries with people who are living, uh, this last one was in a trailer park in the city. And they, with the mobile homes there, they take their garbage to a central location, and then it is up to the trailer park um, management to basically have that garbage removed. The bylaw is looking into it, and so it was not removed in a timely fashion, and it's just overflowing. And then the fam- families that have to live there um, are not very impressed. And so that actually has been a concern that has come up with other businesses in Estevan this summer. And I don't know if uh, what, why or what we can do, but I guess bylaw is the one thing that we have teeth for. So if in the event that you are living somewhere where your person that you pay the rent to, and you are a tenant, if the manager or the owner of that property is not taking care of their garbage, then you can phone bylaw, and bylaw can look into that for you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. It's not really an inquiry, it's a minor complaint. We have two sets of lights in town where one is at the Aurora Power Dodge Corner. The other is that new one north of the mall. And you'll get, one side gets a turning signal, and we get to sit there. If you're driving through, you'll see somebody, they got their left turn signal on. So would it not, and I guess in my mind, it would make more sense to give both sides the left turn, then the solid green. So in other words, allow the turners to turn, then the green. And you're getting people into the mall or in, for the one north of the mall, into the mall and into the neighborhood, and then the people driving through.
Excellent. No, thank, thanks for that. We actually just had a traffic board meeting this afternoon. And uh, that, that very concern was brought up, and they're going to try move in the signal lights, the turn lights at the same time, so. We're going to change it for a month or so, evaluate it, and go from there, which, like you said, we just had the meeting today, so good question, and the report will be coming to council whenever it gets, gets done here in the next week or two, but before the next meeting for sure, we'll have that in our information packages, so thank you for that. City Treasurer? I thought you were going to have something tonight. Counselor Dubowski?
Uh, yes, thanks, your worship. I actually, um, over the weekend on Saturday, yeah, Saturday it was, um, the Estevan Car Club had a cruise, which they didn't do last year, but they did the year before. Where they meet up and then cruise through Estevan to the different uh, care homes. So I, I just wanted to shout that out and say, you know, it was a, it was a great event. There was a decent amount of cars there, and so hopefully all the um, the residents in those care homes and those areas that they drove past. Um, I was in, I was in the Congo line there as well. Um, yeah, I just, I hope they all had a, a good time watching all the cars and um, at the end at the long-term care, there's uh, they all, they all came out and talked to all the owners and so yeah, hopefully it was just a, a good experience for all in the residence that maybe saw us driving through the city and uh, yeah.
Yeah, please thank the car club for that, because I know it's definitely appreciated throughout the different homes in town for sure. Thank you for that. Counselor Johnson?
I'd just like to comment on uh, Fourth Street. I like to see uh, all the work that's been occurring, especially with the trees that have been put in. Uh, I understand they're a Brandon Elm type of tree that we have acquired. And I also like to uh, comment on all the lighting that I see that has been installed, street lighting. And it's all nice and proper, and it's very straight, did a nice job of that. Complement the, the electrical workers and whoever was involved in that job. A little bit more work, I understand, is left on the paving stones and maybe uh, some other areas to clean up around those tree boxes. But for the most part, I think the project is coming together, and I'm looking at, and I've been told that we're looking at a completion date around uh, Thanksgiving. Is that right, Jeff?
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So yeah, we have been working with ASL. Uh, they're going to do a full closure here over the next couple of weeks to do the second lift of payment and put in all the trees, so hopefully within about two weeks, we will be looking at turnover back to the city, but I will, I know we have meetings every Wednesday, so I will get a confirmation from ASL on the exact timelines of that and get a report to council.
Thank you very much, City Manager. It's nice to see that project coming to completion.
I agree. Thank you for that, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Wallyser?
Thank you, your worship. A couple of exciting events in our community over the last two weeks. The Saskatchewan Brain Injury Association Brain Boogie Walkathon was at Woodlawn in support of brain injury survivors, so a big thanks to Jen Kahinka who organized that for our community again this year. And then uh, thank you to the community who did end up selling out the Humane Society Duck Derby, so four thousand ducks were dumped into the river and twenty thousand dollars was raised to support the Estevan Humane Society. Thank you to everybody that went down to the park to celebrate the day or buy some ice cream in support of the Humane Society. And congratulations to the winner. And then, just a note of the upcoming events on Tuesday, September thirtieth, in recognition of Orange Shirt Day, also known as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The Suris Valley Museum has partnered with the Métis Society in Estevan, and they will be offering homemade soup and bannock for a donation. And everyone from the community is welcome to attend.
Excellent, thank you for that. There's always something to do in this little town. Sorry, Counselor Mouse, I forgot you.
I'm sort of out of the loop here. I have no way, why reason for that. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. City Manager?
Nothing, Dad, your worship.
City Clerk? Nothing tonight? And I'm good too. Everything's been touched on that I had going on, so can we have a motion to go into committee? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Dubowski, all in favor? Carried. We are in committee. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.